Very good. Appreciate the recording starting then. David, how are we on participation right now?
We have 11.
Very good. So seeing that the time is 10:04 a.m., I'll call this meeting, this continuation of our meeting from Thursday to order of the County San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission. Welcome Commissioners, welcome members of the public. Appreciate it. David, I'm assuming we need to call the roll.
Yes, and I have some introductory comments as well. I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to provide oral testimony during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website.
David, can I pause you there?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, because this is a continuation of Agenda Item 8, I'm happy to have the public comments guidance read now or later at your discretion, but those comments will be for the special meeting that's scheduled to begin at 2 o'clock. I do not anticipate reopening public comment under this agenda item.
Okay, I'm happy to move on to the roll. Call Chair Ben.
Please. And here.
Vice Chair Katerina. Vice Chair Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Chen. Commissioner Diaz.
Here.
Commissioner Dostal.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Inman.
Here.
Commissioner Kugliak.
Here.
Commissioner Kugliak is present. Commissioner Larson. Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Pons.
Here.
Commissioner Russ.
Present.
Commissioner Servin. Chair Ben, with 11 Commissioners present, there is a quorum.
Very good. Thank you. And I'll just mention to everyone, there are a number of technical difficulties around right now, so I'll beg your indulgence, and especially for members of the public, I think some Commissioners are having some video issues that you may see in and out. Please bear with us and we will keep working on them. Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
I just wanted to say sorry I'm late and I didn't know if I was recorded properly because I was in the waiting room. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Very good. All right, Commissioners.
Chair Ben, for the record, I'm present as well. Sorry, I wasn't a panelist when the roll was called.
Very good, Commissioner Servin. Thank you for the update. David, you have that recorded.
13 Commissioners present, Chair Ben.
Excellent. Thank you again. All right, Commissioners. So there've been a number of developments, as I hope you've all seen in your emails this morning. I think the public has been made aware of these, at least some of these developments as regards process, or all the developments as regards process. So what I would propose to do is start with a brief presentation by Flow Analytics of the scenarios. I'd like that to be kept to a very, very concise review, but I understand because Commissioners haven't seen these yet and our last discussion was very late in the evening. I'd like to do that first, then allow one-minute Commissioner statements, not mandatory, but just a chance for us to update where we are. After that, my intention will be to take up the Agenda item regarding the closed session that you just received this morning. So if you haven't had a chance to look at those materials, please do so now. But my anticipation is we will be taking a vote on that very soon, if not immediately, after Commissioner statements. Is that acceptable? Are there any questions about that, Commissioner Servin?
Thank you, Chair Ben. I'd like to clarify this as a point of order. For, I understand that we will be considering three separate scenarios with Flow's upcoming presentation. From my memory of the last meeting that we held, we had a discussion as to procedure and we authorized looking into further alternative scenarios. I don't, however, recall having a conversation as to the merits of the scenarios and and taking, taking a, taking, taking a straw vote or however we would have done it on, on each of the scenarios, similar to how we did that with the Statement of Principles last week. So I just wanted to clarify how it is that we decided on each of these three scenarios, why these three, why these three scenarios and not any others. So can we, can we, can we just clarify that for myself and the public, please? Thank you.
We can, sorry, thank you. Commissioner Servin, we can clarify that in further detail in a little while. But I do think it's appropriate, as part of that clarification, to have clarified what has been circulated and posted now that they are out there. I'd be happy to entertain your comments at an appropriate moment, but for right now, I, because this material has been not only circulated in a very timely way, I might say, and I thank Flow Analytics for producing it the way they did. But my sense of the Commission is it would at least be worthwhile to have the presentation from Flow Analytics, which I promise will be very concise. And then I really do feel strongly as Chair, it would be appropriate to give Commissioners a brief chance to update their positions, not late, at least because this discussion was proceeding very late in the evening. So unless there's a strenuous specific point of order on it, I'd much prefer to move that way, particularly because we have a closed-session Agenda item that unfortunately had developed very suddenly, and I want to give Commissioners a chance to discuss that. Commissioner Diaz first.
So is it?
Please, Commissioner Diaz first. Please.
You didn't answer my question.
I answered it as best I could for now, and I want to turn to other Commissioners, Commissioner Servin, and I'll try to come back to you. Commissioner Diaz.
Yeah, so I mean, just to clarify, we are not allowed at this point to modify any of the current or propose any amendments to the current three scenarios that are presented to us.
That issue will be a topic for discussion, presuming we move ahead with that discussion. But for right now, I want to limit things because of the closed-session development to one-minute statements. Now, those one-minute statements, as far as I'm concerned, it'd be perfectly appropriate to say something about what you think of the scenarios themselves, or as Commissioner Servin was just explaining, what you think of the process regarding those. That's fine. But I am very keenly aware, and I have a very strong sense from the Commission of the time limitations we have before us today. I want to respect that, and I want to respect each Commissioner's right to make their points clear. So for the initial stage, it seemed to me most appropriate to at least hear from Flow because the material's been circulated and posted for the public, and then have Commissioner statements so that there's no question that Commissioners have at least had a chance to initially make their points, whatever they may be. With that, I'm going to turn to Flow Analytics. Alex and John, if at all possible, if we can do this within five minutes, I'd much appreciate it. It's nothing against you. It's everything to do with preserving the Commission's time. Thank you again for the exceptional work in getting this done. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Ben. I will be as expeditious as possible. I'm going to share my screen. Due to the time constraints, we're not going to have the same sort of story map, as we call it, to go through, but we do have the scenarios in the web viewer, so we can look at them that way. And I will start with the first from Commissioner Garcia. And let me turn that one on. Okay, so this is the map resulting from the directions, and I'm also going to turn on the areas that changed between the final working draft map and this map. Then we'll go through them really quickly, step by step. In District 1, remove Skyline Paradise Hills to District 4. You can see that right there. It's now part of the Purple District 4. You can also see along with these changes, the total population that changed. Second point, add La Presa and Coronado to District 1. So you can see that they're both blue now. In East County, District 2, remove unincorporated areas of Vía de Oro and Spring Valley. That's this section right here. Add Mira Mesa, Rancho Penestros, and the Convoy District. See that right here. That's Mira Mesa, Rancho Penestros. That's the one section of, that's Kearney Mesa, the convoy area bounded by the highways stated. In the central area, District 4, remove Claremont, Linda Vista, a convoy area in Mission Valley, if necessary. So you can see right here, that area is Claremont Mesa, Linda Vista. Mission Valley did not need to be moved based on population. And then the coastal district, District 3, remove Coronado. Seen that that's moved to District 1 already. Remove Rancho Penestros and Mira Mesa. Saw that change, and then add Claremont Linda Vista. That's why it is yellow or orange, like the rest of the coastal district. Briefly pull up the stats for that. Overall deviation of 7.5%. Highest district is still 5. Lowest is District 3. Coastal District, negative 3.7%. Any questions before I move on, Chair Ben, or should I continue?
Alex, I'd much prefer you continue. Thank you.
Yep. All right, so this is the second map from Commissioner Russ. I'm going to keep it, I'm going to zoom out for just a second, but this is mostly a change between districts. It is only a change between District 2 and District 4. I'll zoom in and we'll look at the change areas. We have move Alcohonton from District 4 to District 2. You can see that there. It's now in green. Move Navajo, including Allied Gardens, San Carlos, from District 2 to 4. Along the same lines, move Tierra Santa Kearney from District 2 to 4, and move Sarah Mesa from District 2 to 4. So that's this entire area outlined in pink right here. That includes Navajo, Tierra Santa, Sarah Mesa, Kearney Mesa. And stats for that, 7.1% deviation. District 5 is still the highest at 3.8. Lowest is District 2, negative 3.3%. All right. The third map from Commissioner Pons. Zoom back out so you can see it as a whole. The changes are mostly between Districts 1, 2, and 3. So I'll zoom back in on those change areas. Move Spring Valley, Paradise Hills, Casa de Oro, Mount Helix, and Rancho San Diego to District 4. So we can see how this area, the place I just mentioned, were in District 2. Now they're part of District 4. That includes Skyline Paradise Hills down here. And then move Alcohonton to District 2. I want to clarify that we're looking at, in the materials we received, this is called Scenario 3A, because the result of this, you can see La Presa is not moved in the instructions, and that makes it separated from the rest of District 2. And also, the overall deviation in this configuration is 12.8%. So Flow moved ahead to make a valid map with creating 3B. And the change here is moving La Presa from District 2 to District 1. Let me change the colors. You can see now La Presa is part of District 1 in blue. That resolves the contiguity issue as well as the deviation, which with that move and the two that are specified, gets us to 7.5%. District 5 is still the highest at 3.8 because of no changes. Lowest is District 1 at negative 3.6%. John, anything else to add or anything else from us, Chair Ben?
John?
No, I will at some point, that is the appropriate, would like to mention that we did hear about, I know we heard about the Fuego Springs and the other area quite a bit at the end, and sort of summarize what those do to the maps when it makes sense.
Very good, and I do, I appreciate you reminding us of that and also deferring that discussion until an appropriate moment. Thank you for that. All right, Commissioners, again, thank you for your patience on this. Two other notes before we turn to Commissioner statements. I'm sorry, Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
Sorry, my mistake.
Yeah. First, there have been a number of process complications recently, some of which were discussed on, at our meeting on Thursday, some of which we are still dealing with. I do not want to take valuable time today to deal with them. I do want to acknowledge they're still out there, and I do want to just refresh Commissioners' memory that we do have bylaws. And particularly in today's situation, when I think the Commission is in agreement that our time is precious, I'm going to do my best to just stand by what is clear in the bylaws and exercise my discretion whenever needed to move us along. In that same vein, I really do urge Commissioners to recall general principles of decorum. I don't think there has been any intentional disrespect, and I do sympathize that working on Zoom is difficult at times. But please feel free, as I just did, to fix a plug that was coming out. If you need to turn your camera off for a few seconds, that's perfectly understandable. And I think other Commissioners and members of the public will understand that you're still, you're still listening. If you're going to be gone for an extended period, it's perfectly appropriate to exercise a point of privilege and say you may have to be gone for a moment. That's okay. What I would prefer, though, is not to have things going on camera other than careful attention and participation with due respect as well as commitment, energy, and wisdom. But I really want to underline, underline respect there, both for fellow Commissioners and for the public. All right. With that, we'll turn to one-minute Commissioner statements. David, if it's acceptable for you, knowing that you got the challenges as well making this work, I'd like to call the Commission, on the Commissioners in random order. I'm going to, in this case, accept, exempt myself and Co-Vice Chair Katerina, but allow Co-Vice Chair Garcia to be in the mix because she is one of the proposers. So David, if you could run the randomizer with the understanding that the Chair and Co-Vice Chair Katerina should be reserved for the end, that will take us forward. Commissioners, these are not mandatory statements, and if you do make a statement, I would strongly request you to keep them within a minute. Obviously, the more concise, the better. David?
Thank you, Chair Ben. We'll begin with Commissioner Pons, followed by Commissioner Diaz.
Okay, thank you. First, thanks to Flow Analytics for their adjustments on La Presa to bring Scenario 3B into compliance, statutory compliance. The second point is focusing on 3B. I say it follows and addresses the BIPOC concerns, the community of interest concerns in District 4. It also addresses the community of interest concerns to bring Alcohonton as part of District 2, what we call the East County. My analysis revealed that I don't think it significantly impacts the district's demographic populations, the voting age populations, nor does it alter the citizen voting age populations, but that's just my review and my assumptions based on my analysis. I am also going to assume that it did not alter the results of Dr. Gross's RPV analysis, nor will it alter Mr. Adelson's observations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Diaz. And then if I understood you correctly, Co-Vice Chair Garcia would speak now.
That's correct, as part of the pool, yes.
Commissioner Diaz and then Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I, working from Draft Map 13A V11, I, although I, I support concepts in the version that Commissioner Garcia has proposed, I don't think it's the right direction that we should be going. In particular, she is splitting a very prominent part of a community of interests of the AAPI community, and this has been shown through various public comments that we've received from the community. We worked through these different scenarios in a previous meeting and came up with the map that we have, which is 13A V11, which I will stand by, although if you're amenable, Commissioner Garcia, I would like to make some changes to your proposal, which I don't think will not, won't deviate the population very much, if you're open to that. Thank you.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia, followed by Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you very much, and I'm so pleased that we were able to get these three variations or these three new scenarios. I think they'll be helpful. And Commissioner Diaz, I would be open to changes, but I will say that after looking at these three maps, I'm not necessarily preferring the scenario that I proposed. And I want to speak to the AAPI, that coy, because this map and 13B11 and this particular map actually stemmed from Map 11, which was one that I also proposed. And in that map, I specifically asked for the AAPI community, as they had voiced their concerns, to be, as they described themselves, to be preserved in Map 11, and it was. It just moved that community to the East County and not into the coastal district. And if you go back and look at their early, early comments, they did not ask, they asked to be preserved. So I kind of am preferring Commissioner Pons' map at this time. Open, completely open, though. Thank you.
Commissioners, I will, I will exercise a point on process here. Please refer to the scenario maps by their number. This is just for ease of reference, if nothing else. Scenario 1, Scenario 2, Scenario 3. I know there's no intention here. I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page. Thank you.
I'm sorry, 3A, Scenario 3A is no longer valid. It's Scenario 3B. 3B is the one that's valid based on the adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you.
So may I clarify, may I clarify, my preference was for, I just want to say that looks like a good 3B.
So Scenario 1, Scenario 2, Scenario 3B. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner Russ. Commissioner Hanson, you may be muted.
Okay, here I go again. I'm hap, I'm very happy that Flo, with Flo and their efforts to get us to this point with these three scenarios, I would be willing to consider any one of them. However, I have to say that I'm still not getting any emails from the county system, so I have not had a chance to look at these scenarios closely. I'm going to try to go back now and look at them from the website if they're up, if it's possible now. I looked earlier and I didn't see them. So, but I may unhook myself. So if I drop off, that's what I'm doing, and I'll have to re-enter the conversation after I can look at them. But thanks to all for your efforts to address the needs that have been identified.
Commissioner Russ, followed by Commissioner Dostal.
Yeah, and I'm going to interrupt there because thank you, Commissioner Hanson, for that. Staff, please do whatever we need to do to support Commissioner Hanson's ability to at least connect on her priorities. Thank you.
And Chair Ben, to confirm, everything that's been posted has been posted on the website, and we'll connect with Commissioner Hanson to assist if needed.
Thank you very much, Barbara, for that clarification. David, please continue.
Commissioner Russ, followed by Commissioner Dostal.
It was an outstanding job by Flow to get these, these three scenarios, like four, but down to three scenarios for us to consider. I have to admit, even though Scenario 2 came out with a lower deviation than, than the other scenarios, I actually prefer Scenario 3, 3 Bravo, 3D. And I think it could be improved, and therefore I would offer a friendly amendment. We can, we can improve our deviation by moving Coronado, we've talked about this before, moving Coronado from District 3 to District 1, where it has been for the last 10 years. But right now, we have, we have three maps essentially on which we need to decide today. Today, and I think that we don't need to be adding other, you know, other scenarios for Flow to, to map and things like that. We have three, really, I think fairly good choices here. Not perfect, but very good choices. And I'm very much in favor of 3B, particularly if, if the profferer would, would agree to the friendly amendment of Coronado from D3 to D1.
Commissioner Russ, I just want to clarify, I'm sure you included this in your calculation. We actually have four maps still available to us.
Version, yeah.
I didn't want to prejudice discussion. I just want to make sure that's what you admit. Good, thank you.
You're right, we have four. You're right.
Commissioner Dostal, followed by Commissioner Inman.
Thank you. Thanks again to Flow for the quick turnaround. I also am in favor of 3B with, you know, if there are minor quick adjustments, I think they should only be to one map, and I prefer that that map be 3B. Thank you.
Commissioner Inman, followed by Commissioner Larson.
In terms of the current, current maps, I, I as well would rank Scenario 3B first, Scenario 2, and then the final working draft map, which is, which is the, the map that all these came from. I do want to hear the discussion that we're going to have, just to understand potential trade-offs or how, how that map satisfies all, all the communities of interest. I do see that 3B does address the BIPOC communities of interest down there in Rancho San Diego, but the Caldian community also was very interested in having that be part of their community of interest. So again, there are compromises that have to be made. Alcohonton going to the East County and Rancho San Diego and those other areas going into the BIPOC district is a trade-off that I believe we can make. So thank you.
Commissioner Larson, followed by Commissioner Brown.
David, before you continue, Commissioner Brown, did you have a point of order or privilege? I see a hand up.
I was just going to make a comment.
Okay, if you can wait, if you wait for your statement, that'd be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Alex.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I really want to offer my thanks to Flow again. They're doing a terrific job in supporting us. Overall, I'm not very happy with the whole process we're going through right now. I really concur with what Commissioner Diaz has said. I like our last map. However, if we are going to modify maps, I support Scenario 3 Bravo. I reject Scenario 1. And that's how I feel. Over.
Commissioner Brown, followed by Commissioner Kugliak.
I want to say thank you to Flow also for turning this around so quickly. It was great. Great job and gives us a real good vision of what we're looking at there. So I would agree with everyone else on 3B, Scenario 3B, with some tweaks. So, thank you.
Commissioner Kugliak, followed by Commissioner Servin.
I'd like to say, first of all, this is why I'm off video. I'm participating and listening, but I'll be off video after making my statement. I really want to say thank you to Flow, and I hope the community appreciates how very difficult what they've done is and to do it so quickly into such high quality. Not only is it appreciated, but it's appreciated how difficult it was as well. And I concur with the leanings of the rest of the Commission that my preference is for Map 3B.
Commissioner Servin, followed by Co-Vice Chair Katerina. Commissioner Servin, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, David, I had to mute. So thank you to Flow, thank you to the rest of the Commissioners and to the public for being here. I'm baffled. I'm not sure why I spent all of last Friday in a meeting discussing principles and coming up with a statement of, of what we had. Discussing principles and coming up with a statement of of what we had. Decided as our values moving forward. When, when, when what we did was. We just met again two days ago and essentially threw out all those principles. And produced more maps that. Did not respect any of those decisions that we made. So. I guess I'm, I don't know what that last Friday's meeting was for. And now here we are with. Three different maps or four maps. And I, I think that. You know, we have, we can only, we can only have two of three. Things. What, those three things are North County, the way that we have it drawn now, a BIPOC corridor central district that. Remains. That makes sense in the way in, in, in trying to empower that, that community. And that's the way that Pana has drawn it for us. And also the third thing is a central district that makes that, that, that makes sense where anything west of the fifteen is. Is not in the East County and we can only have two of those three things. And I mean, for me, I'm kind of baffled why we're not. Considering anything in the North County and only everything else has to change. So. That's what, that's, that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina, followed by Chair Bay.
Hi, thank you, everyone. Thank you to the commissioners for these different versions. I'm going to go right to the point. I am supporting scenario two. And I'm supporting scenario two because we've heard very clearly that not only. Does El Cajon. Need to be considered in East County, but also Rancho San Diego needs to be considered in East County. And scenario two is the only map that allows that. I would like to do a lot of things to this map. As I think we all would, and I think there are some minor things if we decide to move forward with something like the, the Burigo Springs issues or cleaning up Harmony Grove. Elton Forest, but, but we have to move forward today and so, and we need to do it quickly. And, and smartly and in full transparency with the public. And, you know, yes, there could be improvements, but we need to finish this and get it done. So I'm proposing scenario two. With minor, minor, if any, adjustments. Thank you.
Chair Bay.
Thank you. Everything I might want said has been said. With a couple of exceptions, but not enough to make it worth the extra time. So I will again defer with thanks to. All commissioners and we can take the clock down. Thank you. For really good statements and I hope the public appreciates. Not just the excellent workflow did as Commissioner Krugliak mentioned. But the extra, the impressive work that the commissioners have done. In considering all this on very, very expedited basis. So. As commissioners know. This morning, we, we received a confidential opinion letter from a special Voting Rights Act counsel, Mr. Adelson, who I believe is with us. Good morning, Bruce. We've also received yesterday the final working drafts and map scenarios requested by the IRC. And later in the afternoon, and I do want to make sure both commissioners and the public remain aware of it. Additional analysis and input from our racially polarized voting team led by Dr. Kristen Gross. The presentation of Dr. Gross's additional work has been posted to the IRC website. This morning, and I think is in the hands of all the commissioners and I'm sure they join me. Not only expressing appreciation to Flow Analytics, but to Dr. Gross and Mr. Adelson for some oppressive attention. Once Flow Analytics took so long to do their job. I'm kidding. Thank you very much again to all. All four of our consultants and their supporting bodies. So in light of all these materials, our general council has recommended that our agenda for today's continued meeting be amended to include a closed session item. We have checked carefully on the grounds for this in accordance with the Brown Act. We need a, well, I should say a two thirds vote of the commission will be required to take up that amended item. Marguerite, did you want to say anything additional before I take a motion? And call for a vote on that?
I know what you said is what I would have said, David. That's just fine. Thank you.
Thank you. So do I have a motion that there is a need for a closed session as reflected in the amended agenda? Co-Vice Chair Katerina? Is that a motion? Do you have a second? Commissioner Inman, thank you. Is there any clarification or discussion needed on the motion? Very good, David, would you please?
Notice what, 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 what is, what's the, what, what, what notice are we providing to the public for the purpose of the closed session?
Marguerite, do you want to provide the background and legal requirement on that?
Yes, I'm happy to. Items can be added to an agenda. When facts become. Manifest. After the posting of the agenda. And action is needed. You are scheduled today to adopt your plan. You have three scenarios. That have just been reviewed by your Voting Rights Act experts. And your legal counsel. For voting rights and those scenarios were posted. After the adoption of the agenda. These facts qualify for an amended agenda. To add an item. Number two, the item has been agendized. And I believe if staff could confirm with me an amended agenda posted. That includes the closed session. Including this vote. And very shortly, the chair will read the basis for the closed session. Which completely complies with law. And with that, Chair Bay, I'll turn the floor back unless you would like some clarification.
I would like to give staff a chance to clarify the point you just made on posting, Barbara.
All items adjusted agenda has been posted and also distributed to the commissioners.
And I will just offer my thanks to council and staff for taking the kind of action required in this circumstance. Not only to support commissioners, but to make the public clearly aware. I can tell you it, it's a considerable amount of work to get that right. So that we can consider this motion and I do want to emphasize. This is a motion and a vote. It requires a two thirds vote. So commissioners, this is a fairly serious matter. But I would not have taken council's advice. To bring it to you unless I thought it was that important. Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
I just wanted to confirm that a two thirds vote is ten commissioners voting affirmative. Is that correct?
That is correct. With that, David, would you please call the roll for, I'm sorry, Commissioner Diaz.
If we don't get the vote. Required. What are the consequences of not having this information? Presented.
That would be a matter, I think, that would be a matter I think we would have to discuss. And at least I would need. A brief recess. And I mean, very brief, because we do have a written confidential memo before us. But as always, commissioners, we have to be respectful. Of our requirements in discussing anything that falls in that category. Commissioner Servin.
I'm sorry. So is, are we conducting the closed session under the anticipated litigation exception to the Brown Act open session rule? Well, what is the, what is the exemption that we're, we're conducting this, this closed session under?
Barbara, Marguerite is, go ahead, Marguerite.
Yes, anticipated litigation.
Very good. Not seeing any other questions. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Bay. Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Hanson, you may be muted.
I'm going to have to abstain. I was taking a phone call from your office about my email and I couldn't hear both conversations at once. So I have to abstain.
Commissioner Larson.
I.
Commissioner Pons.
I.
Commissioner Russ.
I.
Commissioner Inman. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kruglia.
I.
Commissioner Bay.
I.
Commissioner Servin.
The scenarios don't present us with any new information.
Commissioner Servin, we're in, Commissioner Servin, we're in a voting process. An I, an A, and abstain will do. Thank you.
Commissioner Diaz.
I'm abstaining.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
I.
Commissioner Dostal.
I.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
I.
Commissioner Brown.
I.
Chair Bay, the motion passes with Commissioner Chen being absent, Commissioners Hanson and Diaz abstaining, Commissioner Servin voting no. All other commissioners voting I. Ten eyes, two noes, two abstains, and one absent.
Very good. Thank you, commissioners. So with that. David, am I correct then in that we had ten commissioners voting in favor? And therefore we, that constitutes the required vote?
That does constitute the required vote.
Sorry, please.
Ten votes in favor, one vote, no, two abstentions, and one absent.
Very good. So with that, we turn to agenda item. Eight point two on the amended agenda. Which reads recess for closed session. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. And those words conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation are in capital letters. Followed by significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D. Of government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine. Number of potential cases, one. Staff has provided instructions for the closed session and linking to it. In anticipation of this, I want to assure commissioners, there was nothing undone toward in this, but we wanted to make sure we were ready to go. If that turned out to be the case. Barbara, would you like to explain or highlight how this is going to be done?
Yes, thank you. So you should have received an email at nine twenty five AM. It has the additional link, Zoom link. For the special, for the closed session. So you will need to log off of this one and log into the new one. This one, just to add, Chair Bay, this one will remain up. We'll put it, we'll post it for the public while we are in closed session. Thank you.
And for members of the public, I apologize. You know, this commission's commitment to transparency and especially to letting you know about times. We do all we can on that. I will ask staff to provide updates as possible. But other than that, we will, I promise, be as concise and expedited in this closed session as possible. Any other motions, comments, or points? Commissioner Servin.
Sorry, that was an old one. I forgot to put my hand down.
Understood. Thank you. I apologize, but more than understand. Okay. So we, we are here. Now moving to the closed session. It's ten forty seven. We will try to simply convene as quickly as possible in that closed session. Thank you, commissioners. We're in recess until we reopen in closed session. Thank you.
David, can, are you still there? I haven't received the link. Is this a new link for the closed session?
It was sent in an email at like nine twenty, Sonia.
I can't find it in my inbox. I'm going to try to find it again.
Nine twenty five and it was from COSD, the redistricting COSD.
Hi, Commissioner Diaz, we can go ahead and forward you the email again. Thank you.
So I guess we're all going to the other Zoom. See you later, public participants. Sorry to have to leave y'all.
Sound check, Commissioner Diaz here.
I can hear you, Commissioner Diaz.
And this is RF, do you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, I can hear you as well.
Thank you.
Chair Bame?
Chair Bame, yes, I can hear you.
David and Barbara, can we go ahead and take the slide down?
Okay.
I did want to check if we have Dr. Gross with us.
Chair Bame, I do see him, will let us move him right over.
Thank you. Dr. Gross, welcome, and I'll welcome you more formally when we reconvene. Clerk Hall, it appears to me we're back at a quorum.
Yes, we do have a quorum, there's at least 12, and I know the staff are working on getting anybody else in from the attending.
Be right back, hold on. Okay, so noting that the time is 12:40. I am reconvening under Agenda Item 8, but starting with the reportable action from counsel from the closed session. Murray?
Thank you, Chair Bame, there was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. So Commissioners, just one or two introductory notes. First of all, I know, and I'll reinforce, we are all anxious to hear again from the public on the latest developments. We will not do that under this existing agenda item because we've already closed public comment. We have a special meeting that will begin at 2 o'clock, that is scheduled to begin at 2 o'clock, where public comment will be taken up. However, I will likely have to limit that. And if this discussion is continuing, we may have to take a procedural step to continue this discussion. So to be fair to the public, I wanted to let them know there certainly will not be any window for public comment, I can anticipate before 2 o'clock because we will likely be continuing this discussion, although we might move faster than that. But I don't think we'll begin that special meeting before 2 o'clock. And even if it does begin at 2 o'clock, we may have an additional delay before we can hear public comment. That is not, I want to emphasize for the public, a lack of interest, in fact, far from it. I think it's very keen interest by the entire commission in hearing public input. But we want to do so to make sure it's as relevant and informed as possible by the ongoing discussions. With that, I think the next step is to have a discussion about the, as Commissioner Russ, I think, agreed, the four maps before us in some sort of coherent fashion. I don't want to overly guide the commission on this because I think the commission is still absorbing the considerable amount of information. I would note that we have our consultants available, including, again, Dr. Christian Gross, thank you for joining us. So certainly, any questions for any of the consultants or for our demographer, Flow Analytics, which haven't had a chance to be asked yet. With that, I intend to proceed with a general conversation, noting that Commissioners, of course, have the right to propose a motion. But I would urge that you only propose it if you think there is sufficient interest in specificity in what we're going to discuss. Because otherwise, I think there are a number of issues we need to work through and discuss here that will be worth the time to do so. So, is there anyone who would like to start us off on just about any issue? Commissioner Inman, as SPOC, perfectly appropriate for demographer, thank you for that, and then Commissioner Diaz.
Yes, thank you. I have more commentary at this point than specific questions. I think a lot of the issues have been addressed in the maps and the information we have been provided. I do know we have to make a decision. We are provided with a set of maps that we've arrived at through a very specific, deliberative, and transparent process. And we did go around and make Commissioner's statements earlier, and I believe that the two maps that we have, the scenarios that we have that that really do satisfy the criteria that, the statutory criteria that are in front of us, come down to Scenario 2 and Scenario 3B. We do need to make sure that we're listening to all the COI testimony we've collected. We've collected a vast amount of information on the BIPOC district, which is the primary district that this is impacting at this point, that we're considering and looking at. We've also collected a lot of testimony from the East County about their communities of interest in terms of economic aspects of their communities and the lifestyle and the historic significance of the connections that have been established in the East County. And for those reasons, I do prefer to move forward with Scenario 3B. I think it trades off the various communities of interest as well as protected classes that we need to pay attention to from a federal voting rights standard as well as the Constitution and the various we have to avoid discriminating against certain protected classes. And I see map Scenario 3B as doing that in terms of the BIPOC community, the African-American community specifically, that has raised an issue with some of our other maps, and they are a protected class as well as the Caldian community, which also is a protected class. And the communities of interest that have talked about El Cajon actually being historically an economic center as well as a cultural center for the East County. So for a variety of reasons, based on public testimony that we've heard, and those things, I would prefer Scenario 3B at this point. 2B accomplishes a lot of the tasks that we need to do in terms of the protected classes that we need to look to to address as we move through this redistricting process. So those are mainly my comments and commentary. And I do, I did look through the report provided by Dr. Gross and his team. I see in that report, the general summary high line is that all of those scenarios come out with the same ability to elect results, although the underlying data, there are clearly issues and differences across the various configurations, but at a high level, the ability to elect is very, pretty much, well, it's the same at the high level across all three of those, and so I don't see that as swaying me at this point, one way or the other. So that's more of a commentary on my part, Chair Bame, so thank you for that. And I do look forward to hearing what the other Commissioners are saying at this point in time, so thank you.
Thank you for that. And just a comment I've made before, but I know it's near and dear to the heart of everyone. We sometimes use the word trade-off. And I want to be very respectful of that, and when we talk about percentages being particularly high or particularly low, I think all Commissioners are keenly aware that these numbers and terms reflect real people as individuals. And I just want to reinforce, I don't think anyone means any disrespect by using those terms. I just wanted to state that for the record early on. I also wanted to welcome Commissioner Chen. Glad to see you, and since you haven't had the floor, when you're ready, Commissioner, I'd be more than happy to move you to the front of the list. But when you're ready, as you like. The list I have right now is Commissioners Diaz, Serbin, Dostal, Russ. And that's what I have, I'm sorry?
I'll go last, Mr. Chair, if that's okay with everyone.
I'll put you last at the current list, Commissioner Diaz, because it's a rolling list, I want to be careful about updating, but that's fine. Commissioner Serbin?
I'm happy to defer as well, Chair.
I'd really rather not get into deferring, continuing deferral. So from now on, if you defer, I'll take that as you're not ready to speak and add you to the list later. Commissioner Dostal?
Thank you, Chair Bame. I agree with Commissioner Inman's comments. I think that Map 13B best is the best map we've seen so far.
It's Scenario 3B?
Oh, I'm sorry, 3B.
Scenario 3B, thank you.
Scenario 3B, sorry. We've seen a lot of map numbers. So yeah, Scenario 3B is, I think it addresses all the things we liked before in the North County and coastal and District 1, all those, but I think it also makes an important change in, based on comments we've heard throughout this process for what we call the East County, I can't remember what district number it is now. But we have heard from the beginning, El Cajon is a part of East County, it's important, it's and so I thought that move was important as well as, as Commissioner Inman stated, the testimony we heard specifically about the BIPOC and the African-American community. So I like Scenario 3B to move forward. I do want to make some minor changes to that based on some of the testimony we heard last night about our last draft, which was in the North County, the very eastern part, being part of District 5, as well as there was an issue that I think is not significant in terms of population about a fire district being kept together. So I would recommend that we move forward with Scenario 3B with those minor adjustments.
Thank you for that, and just to clarify, I think there's agreement that when we mention the East County District, we are referring to District 2 on the map and scenarios before us. Commissioner Russ? Commissioner, you're muted.
Finally, finally, just couldn't get it working, thank you, thanks for your patience. I like 3B, and I think 3B is very salvageable. I think that there can be an amalgamation between 3B and 2, for example, so that I look at, I look at District 4 and it's overpopulated. And District 2 is underpopulated, so I think, I think that really what we can do is instead of having, you know, depopulate District 4 by changing Rancho San Diego back into District 2, that area into District 2, and that would, that would help. And that certainly would help the deviation, I think, I think 3B is very salvageable with some minor tweaks, quite frankly.
Thank you for that. My current list, Commissioners Diaz, Serbin, Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Kugliak, Commissioner Diaz.
I am unfortunately not ready to vote on either three of these scenarios or make any motions. I originally had wanted to work with the previous map and make some minor adjustments, I don't know if this is the right time, but I would like to hear more from the other Commissioners and also our legal experts on their analysis. And my primary concern being that
Commissioner Diaz, I think you were muted, or I heard "primary concern" that.
Oh, my primary concern is that we're splitting too many communities of interest.
Thank you for that. Commissioners, I'm going to continue with the list for now because I want to hear from more Commissioners before we entertain motions. I am keenly aware there may be an interest in hearing from consultants. I'm happy to do that whenever Commissioners are ready, but I still have a list of at least four Commissioners. So I intend to continue with that list for now. That list is Commissioners Serbin, Commissioners Serbin, Hanson, Kugliak, and Pons. Commissioner Serbin?
Thank you, Chair Bame. So I've heard some support for Map 3B from my fellow Commissioners, who I appreciate sharing their opinions, and of course, I respect them. I am curious what we're what, because for me, I'm not sure 3B accomplishes and responds to recent public comment, if that's what we're trying to do. Again, coming out of last Friday, we had made some decisions, and then we heard some public comment, and so I'm assuming that what we're trying to do right now is respond to that public comment. And I'm not sure 3B does that. I mean, what I can support would be a map in which El Cajon and the surrounding communities, the surrounding unincorporated communities are in the, what we're calling the Central District. I think that would be responsive to I think that would be responsive to public comment that's asked us to keep El Cajon and the surrounding unincorporated communities unified, as well as it would respond to other public comment that has asked us to have those areas unified with the rest of the central district. So that's, that's where I'm meeting right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, just to be aware, I'm hearing enough discussion about three B, not necessarily favorism for it, but discussion about scenario three B that I may be asking relatively soon for a motion to approve scenario three B so that we continue with that kind of, with a discussion focused on, but not exclusive to that scenario. Commissioner Hanson.
I wanted to speak with Commissioner Russ in favor of three B. And that is out of respect to the people that have spoken from the very beginning about keeping Rancho San Diego with their sister community of El Cajon. And we have heard that, not just, we have heard it loudly the last couple of days, but we have certainly heard this before from various groups from one or another persuasion. So I concur with Commissioner Russ and Beat Army.
I'll note that there may be a certain bias on that issue within this commission, and I will particularly restrain various letters from any formal comment on that as a non-agendized item. Commissioner Kugliak, then Commissioner Pons, then Commissioner Katerina. And again, commissioners, if you'd rather just move to taking a motion, I'm happy to. Commissioner Chen, I'd like to, Commissioner Kugliak, do you mind if I take Commissioner Chen first, since he hasn't spoken? Please, Commissioner Chen.
I mean, I know I was catching up to do. Three B looks okay to me. I do agree with Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Russell, moving Rancho San Diego. Can you tell us what the population of Rancho San Diego is, what impact it would be? We tried to make that move.
I'll ask Flow Analytics if they can give us that now or in a minute.
Yeah, I can give you that number now. Total population of Rancho San Diego, since it's designated place, twenty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-five.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. I'm sorry, Commissioner Chen is.
If we made that move and just moved that into the East County District with El Cajon, we would still be below 10% as far as total deviation, it looks like.
Yep, I will confirm later, but I can just say briefly that looking at, you know, if we're basing this on scenario three B, two is under by nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-four. It would take that on, so that's, would just be over by about, you know, two to three thousand. And then District Four currently over fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-seven, losing twenty-one thousand. Yeah, it would, would keep us below 10% generally. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Could I clarify? Because I think that's the way it already is in three B.
Commissioner Hanson, I believe right now, Rancho, it's one of the big differences and I'll confirm with Commissioner Pons, since he proposed it. Right now, at the moment, Rancho San Diego would be located in District Four, correct?
Excuse me, I misspoke. It's already in scenario two.
Right, in scenario two, yes. Yes, correct. Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioners Kugliak, Pons, Katerina Diaz.
Thank you. So I support Commissioner Servin's comment in general. If there's no, if there's not enough will of the commission to do it, I support three B as is. The, to Commissioner Russ's statement, if you want to do that on principle, move Rancho San Diego, then that's a fine reason to do it. But it would have zero impact on the overall deviation because it's not based on two and four, it's based on one and five. So it would have zero impact.
Thank you. Commissioner Pons.
Yes, concur with all of my fellow commissioners. I do not agree with moving Rancho San Diego out of that district because there have been comments that said that they wanted to be in the BIPOC district. Just like others said that they didn't want to be in the BIPOC district and wanted to be part of the East County District. So I like scenario three. Bravo. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners Katerina Diaz, Hanson Garcia. Commissioner Garcia, Katerina, please.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry, I'm on the phone. I apologize. I'm not able to be on a video right now. I am still in support of scenario two. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz, if you're okay, I'm going to take Co-Vice Chair Garcia first because she hasn't spoken in this room. Rosette, please.
Thank you, Chair Vane. So I have a couple of questions, actually, and, and I'll go ahead and make my comment at the same time, if you don't mind. I guess I, if, if Dr. Gross, I think is on the line, if he could just spend a few minutes explaining to me, and I apologize if this is, if it feels like it's not the right venue to do this, I appreciate it. I mean, I understand. But I guess I'd like to understand a little bit more fully how it is that we can change populations around, especially in what is now currently District Four. And the, when you look at the C-VAP numbers in particular, you move in one map from a majority minority coalition, right? So the numbers are that the white population in District Four is below 50%. In some cases, as low as forty-seven or forty-eight percent. And then, for example, in version oh, thirteen A, version eleven, it goes all the way up to fifty-two percent. The white now becomes a majority, and yet nothing changes about ability to elect. And so that, we have seen almost with all of our maps, almost no changes in the ability to elect. And I'm, I just kind of want to understand that a little bit better. So that's my question. I am tending to agree with what seems, at least right now, to be maybe a plurality of the commissioners with respect to map scenario three B. There, thank you. Three B. And I want to bring up Commissioner Russ's point earlier. When he said we could, we could refine this map even more by moving Coronado into District One, something that previously the commission expressed, the majority expressed agreement on. And since the two districts that are the outliers, District One and District Five, one being below it, it has negative overall deviation, the other one having a highest deviation, we'd actually, that, that move would actually, I think, impact the overall deviation. So I'd like to, I'd like to put that on the table as well, along with the other D-five minor ones that I think Commissioner Dostal mentioned. But I'm sorry, I have one other question. Oh, and the other reason that I like this map is because I think it does, we heard a lot about communities being split up. And we heard from the African American community about how in version eleven, they had been split into three separate, different districts, and I think that corrects that. And I hope it also helps correct some of the other commentary we heard about coys being split up. And I just want to state for the record that I, I do not think, I have never detected on the part of anyone on this commission, any desire to split up any coy. In fact, I think the record shows that over and over and over again, we have been looking at trying to keep coys together, and it has been a near impossible task that I think we've actually done a pretty good job of. That's what I think. And I just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gross, I may turn to you now, but I want to ask commissioners, and particularly those on the speakers list, is it, is it all right if we turn to Dr. Gross now? Is there any objection? Very good. Dr. Gross, the floor is yours, both to address those questions and any others that we think you need to highlight from the analysis. You do have the thanks of the entire commission, I think, for providing such useful analysis so quickly. It really is appreciated. Christian, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks. We did our best to turn around things as quickly as possible from the 1:00 AM beginning of this meeting today. So, so thank you. In terms of your question, Commissioner Garcia, that's a really, it's a really good question. And there's a couple of ways to approach it. And the first one is just to think back to, you know, how is this being measured? How do we measure opportunity to elect? We look at the exogenous elections. Because the districts have changed so much, we're not really able to look at endogenous elections. We take the exogenous elections that feature Latino candidate choice, who is running against someone else. And in cases where there was RPV from the RPV report, and then it's effectively an arithmetic, you do some arithmetic to assess how frequently Latino candidates of choice are winning in each district, right? So like District One, in all the scenarios before you, all four maps, Latino candidate choice wins 100% of the time based on the data that we examine in the report. And this is also from Table Three in the report that I produced previously, that we produced previously. And then for District Four, even though there are some, some changes in terms of the racial and ethnic demographics of the district, the win rate remains the same across all four scenarios too, for Latino candidates of choice. And then similarly, also looking at Asian American candidates of choice in exogenous elections, in which there was racially polarized voting from the RPV report, similarly, there's not a difference across District Four in that map for black candidates of choice, black candidates, those candidates who are black, who run against non-black candidates across the past decade in that district are winning. Other candidates who are supported by black voters are winning at the same rate across the different scenarios. And so, so that's just sort of the basic data, but the, to get more to your question is, well, how, how does population change some, yet there's not a change in winning? So it doesn't mean that the margin of victory is different, the margin of victory could be higher or lower, right, in a certain scenario, or slight changes in, you know, slight changes in a particular group's C-VAP may actually move, move, you know, the, the, a win from 60% to 59%, right? But at the end of the day, winning by, with a 59% of the vote or 60% of the vote, if you're the Latino candidate choice, is still a win. And so what we're looking at is that, and that's where the ability to elect part comes in. And so you can have perturbations that will differ, and that's important. The other thing we didn't, we, we talked about in the report for the previous map, but also that, you know, is worth referencing is the importance of a primary election too. We looked at primary elections for this and found pretty consistent evidence across all the scenarios of Latino candidates of choice emerging out of primaries, and that's just in that District One and District Four, right? Again, based on exogenous elections, we're unfortunately unable to look at endogenous elections. So I hope that helps answer it some. And really, it may be, you know, at the end of the day, your choice is about which communities matter to you, right? And, but in terms of the opportunity to elect analysis, the data are showing the same things across the scenarios.
Chair, if I may ask a follow-up question? So all communities matter to me, but I get your point. So I had been inferring that perhaps in District Four, there was the presence of what we've called crossover voting from white, white crossover voting. But actually, what you've just described to me is that it could be that the ability to elect, even though it still stays at 80%, that the, that the margin of victory might actually be narrower, where before maybe they were winning at 60%, it could be, maybe could have dropped to 51% with the changes in the population, so that the overall ability to elect remains the same. But what might be happening in the actual elections, the margin of victory could be, that could be another explanation. I had drawn a different conclusion. Is that, would that be true?
So I can give you those data. Due to the time constraints, I got as much done as quickly as possible, but I do have that data. I can tell you now, if you would like to hear the average vote share for Latino candidates of choice in each district.
I'm not sure that's necessary, and I don't want to take up too much time, but, but your answer so far has been helpful to me.
Yeah, I mean, if I could just address one part, right? So if you do have a district that's a 47, 48% non-white minority district, in which the minority voters vote in coalition together. The, the candidate of choice can win in that district with cohesive minority voters voting in coalition. And then white voters still not voting in support of the candidate, but if there's still 10%, 20% of white voters supporting the minority candidate of choice, minority candidate of choice can win in a district like that, pretty handle it. Also, though, in a district that's 52 or 53% minority, the same thing would apply and would probably be just slightly higher rate of minority voters winning. Or excuse me, minority voters candidate of choice winning.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Diaz, then Commissioner Inman.
I'm going to entertain something that might be a good compromise, because I just wanted to look at the map that the Caldian community had submitted, that we all got emailed to us. And it looks like they're cut, it splits down the center, not quite the center, the city of El Cajon. But it's very clear in their map that Rancho San Diego is part of the community of interest. So in, bear with me, perhaps in this, you know, scenario, I don't know, in three B, would, would the commission be amenable to kind of replicating that, but including that community together? Just that portion that's not identified by the Caldian community, that portion of El Cajon in District Four, and then that outer part of El Cajon that's identified, plus Rancho San Diego to be part of District Two. And how would that affect the population balance? I know Flo hasn't had the chance to look at that, but I want to look at that, if that's possible. I don't think that would might not change the RPV analysis, but I think it's something to consider, because the way that I see three B, and the reason why I wouldn't want to, I mean, I like the fact that the skyline, I believe the skyline Paradise Hills community planning area was moved back to D-four, which I support 100%. But what I, my question is, why, why isn't Rancho, if we're trying to preserve the community of interest of, of the Caldian community, why isn't Rancho San Diego also included in, in that area?
Sonia, if I, if I could, but you're driving.
Before you do, Commissioner, let me just make a couple of quick points. It is now 1/12. We not only have the special meeting and likely public comment, but I do know some commissioners may have trouble with availability the later we get on into the afternoon. I just want to remind commissioners of that, of that possibility. I'm going to turn the floor to Commissioner Inman, and then I'm going to request a motion to discuss thirteen B. And, or to post thirteen, scenario three B, and entertain discussions of it. I know Flo is watching this carefully, and I'll turn to John, I promise, before we have take the motion so that we can clarify what might be being worked on and being prepared. So Commissioner Inman, then John, then we'll talk about the motion. Commissioner.
So Sonia, or Commissioner Diaz, was heading down a path that I think is very important and would be illuminating at this point. If I could ask Flo, Alex, if you could bring up a map that shows scenario three B, I think it would be very helpful for the commission to see that. And then we can see exactly where the lines from that map that we received from the Caldian community intersect with that. I think it's also very illustrative of what would happen if you moved Rancho San Diego into that central district. So Alex, if you could please.
Well, I'd rather, Commissioner, I'm happy to entertain that, but I would like, that I would much prefer to do under a motion.
Well, I'm very much, I'm very much willing to make that motion.
And I'll, I'll turn to you in just a moment. John, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to, you know, add to, in, with regard to timing, I just wanted to add that the later this meeting goes on as well, we've heard some, you know, requests to do some changes to maps. That is going to get harder and harder for us to be able to do as we get later. So I just wanted commissioners to be aware of that as well.
Thank you. And I thought you might be turning that. Okay, so Commissioner Inman, are you providing? Thank you, and I thought you might be turning that. Okay, so Commissioner Inman, are you providing a motion to, well, you have to be a little careful here, but I'm happy to frame this with council's agreement as something along the lines of a motion to adopt Scenario 3B as the scenario to move forward into our special meeting. Does Commissioner Inman, does that capture it well? Council, is that an appropriate formulation of the motion?
May I suggest, looking at the, this can be pretty rough, but looking at the agenda item, you need to amend the work.
The final working draft now.
So a motion to amend the final working draft map to include the changes reflected in Scenario 3 Bravo. Is that where you are, Commissioner Inman? And then you have a new map on which to work, friendly amendments accepted, et cetera. But at least we've, we've marked where we are and moving forward.
Okay, Commissioner Inman, that's the motion?
Yes.
Commissioners, do you need that on the screen? I think it's clear enough. I hope, very good. I do need a second, and Commissioner Pons, I had to, so it's a motion by Commissioner Inman, second by Commissioner Pons, to amend the final working draft map to include the changes reflected in Scenario 3B. Okay, that is the motion on the floor. I will start with a new list, and that's okay, because it was almost empty anyway, starting with Commissioner Serbin. Unless, Commissioner Inman, did you want to bring up the map first?
I did, I think it will help, it will help us better understand the issues related to this map.
So I'll give you the floor for now, and you and Alex, please bring up what's most beneficial for the commission to be looking at.
So, so my, the first thing is, we're entertaining the idea of adding Rancho San Diego, the CDP, as a, as part of the, as part of the East County District, the Green District. And so, yes, exactly, this is the map. If you look at that, the orange area outlines Rancho San Diego, you will see that there's an odd peninsula that intersects, right, yes, right there. And so it very, it makes a weird shape to do that. If you also look at the map submitted by the Caldian community, if you zoom back out a little bit, Alex, if you go over to, oh gosh, I guess I don't know what the road is. Could you take your cursor to the west, please, Alex? A little further, a little further. I think it's right around in there is where that map that the Caldian community gave us comes down from El Cajon. And so their map actually captures Casadel Ore as well as down into Spring Valley. So that, if you look at the map submitted by the Caldian community, they are capturing Casadel Ore, Rancho San Diego, and parts of Spring Valley. So, you know, I guess my concern would be, if you bring Rancho San Diego into the East County, co-joining it with El Cajon as proposed, it really doesn't address all the concerns of those communities. And it does put us in a situation where compactness or contiguity, contiguity is not an issue. There's still a link, a land link. But it, you know, I don't think it really is going to address the concerns. So that's, that's why I would not be amenable to making that sort of a change in this map. And I think it goes against the spirit, Mitt Frank, or Commissioner Pons can probably talk to this better. But I think it goes against the spirit of what we're trying to achieve in, in uniting some of the communities that we're trying to unite by moving specifically Rancho San Diego, Casadel Ore, Spring Valley in, into the current configuration that we did. So, so those are the things that I just wanted to try to illustrate to, to the other commissioners. So with that, I, I, you, thank you.
Thank you for that. And I'm sorry for the, before, Commissioner Serbin, I very much appreciate your patience. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bam. So I appreciate Flo's assistance so far, and, you know, thank you, John, for pointing out the difficulty it will, we will have in, as the, as the later things go on. I'm, I don't have a sense of how much work we need to do to get to where we need to go. But given what John said, do we need to have a discussion about timing? Because I know we, we're talking about trade-offs. One of the trade-offs that I'm concerned about is the trade-off between meeting this deadline and having sufficient time to deliberate and consider and, you know, do the things we need to do. So I'm curious as to whether we need to have a discussion about what our timing looks like and what we are, what, what the appetite of this commission is to, like, engage in further discussion and deliberation and, and look at holistically these, this map instead of, you know, looking, instead of focusing on, you know, just these little bits and pieces here and there.
The point's very well taken. I appreciate that from a procedural point. Alex, John, can you give me a maximum time after which it would be counterproductive to expect any changes from Flo?
Can Alex and I confer for just a bit and then get back to you in maybe five or 10 minutes?
Absolutely, no problem at all. And commissioners, I'll ask you to keep in mind, anything you have for Flo will collect and provide to them as soon as they're back. Thank you very much for that. Commissioner Dostal, then Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Thank you. I again, I again agree with what Commissioner Inman just stated. I think that there was a comment earlier that, you know, if we're going to respond to public comment, then, and I may be a little bit misstating, but if we're going to respond to the Caldians' public comment, then we have to move, you know, then we would need to move everything. And I think we are, we just need to remember, we are responding to the public comment we heard from the Caldians. We are also responding to the public comment we heard from others. Because Rancho San Diego does not just have one community of interest, it has numerous ones. And based on what I've heard, that's the reason why I wanted to move El Cajon, but keep Rancho San Diego in this, you know, central district. To me, that is an appropriate response to all the, the, the community of interests we've heard from in the entire length of this whole process, not just last night. I think it is responsive to the Caldians. Is it 100%? No, but nobody got 100% because we can't, there's just too many competing interests. So that's why I would want to move for continuing with 3B, keeping Rancho San Diego in. I don't know when the appropriate time is to make those last two adjustments. I don't want to make them because I don't, you know, I think Inman knows better the names and the, the spaces. But I do just want to bring that up again. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And the point on remembering all input is incredibly important. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, I'll ask you to hold for just a moment. My, I'd like to request John or Alex to tell us the time limit. And then Commissioner Inman, I'll take Co-Vice Chair Garcia, but I'll ask you at that point to undertake what Commissioner Dostal just raised, and maybe anything Co-Vice Chair Garcia raised. John?
So I have to apologize, Chair Bam. I just raised my hand because I wanted to mention, when Commissioner Dostal mentioned those other changes that we're talking about in North County, I did want to bring up the fact that we, we do need to look at those carefully. There, there was one change with the Fire Protection District, I believe, that only has a population of 413, that's likely to be, not, not cause any challenges. However, the Borrego Springs and the area that is just outside the planning area that takes to get there, that is 3,500 people. And it is in the, all, a D5, which is already the highest populated district. So there is going to be some impact, that's not a simple of a change. And I just wanted to make sure commissioners understood that. Because it, it was a little bit more population than, than I think it, than people thought at first. So I just wanted to put that out there, and we're still figuring out the timeframe. We will have that for you shortly.
Very good. And commissioners, without objection, I'll ask John and Alex to continue working on both those issues involving District Five or the areas around District Five. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Right, so I actually had a question for Flo, but it's not a very important one. I just noticed on the map, in the summary statements, that the Sequan Reservation is listed as having been split. And I just wondered if that could be looked at and fixed. But given what he just, what John just told us about what might happen in D5, if we should try to move Borrego Springs and that Fire District into D5, I wonder if Commissioner Inman and Commissioner Pons would consider moving a friendly amendment to move Coronado into D1, which would perhaps offset any increase in, in the deviation from District Five, since District One and District Five are the two outliers, and that they're the ones driving the overall deviation. If we can bring down the negative deviation in D1, it might offset whatever happens in D5.
From a procedural standpoint, I guess I would have a question about this. So, in terms of adding it as a friendly amendment, I understand that then it would just become part of the motion to be voted up or down. What I am not sure is if sufficient, if, if that causes a significant number of commissioners to go against the original motion, I would be hesitant to simply tack it on as a friendly, as opposed to having it voted separately by the entire commission just to ensure that it doesn't get us in a situation where we have problems down the road.
Very well, now that it's, 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 yeah. And I, I think several commissioners would like to see the data and what they reveal about that. So respectfully, and Co-Vice Chair Garcia, I think I already hear you on this. It's not that we, it is unfriendly as far as anyone feels about it. It's unfriendly in the sense that it might be easiest to have a vote on it, or at least at this point. So we'll proceed accordingly.
I have no intention to torpedo this, this motion at all.
Okay. Um, having no other requests for the floor at the moment, let me see if Alex and John are back. John, both to tell us, and I think Co-Vice Chair Garcia might have a question for you.
So I'll, I'll start with the, the time. If we have the map done, and so that we are in the preparation of deliverables by 6:00 PM Pacific tonight, we will be good. That gives us enough time to do that and get everything there and, and to review it as well. And I, I, I caught Commissioner Garcia's question about the Sequan Reservation. My, we will see on the splits, my guess is, Alex, maybe you already know.
I, I know what it is, and I can show it in just a little bit. Basically, there is like a very, if this is, kind of gets into the scrubbing sort of thing. There are one or two, I think, almost unpopulated blocks that are shared by the Sequan Reservation, as well as Rancho San Diego Census Design Place. So if you keep one of them whole, then you unintentionally split the other. They can't both be whole, but I think I will double check. I think the census blocks have very little population, so it's a split per se, but a negligible one.
Thank you.
Any other requests for the floor? Normally, at this point, I would be calling a vote. I would start with returning to the unfriendly amendment that was proposed, Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Alex, I think the top priority right now would be to see that displayed along the lines of what I think commission, well, in conjunction with what Commissioner Inman, let me check with Commissioner Inman and Pons, is, is that a display to be seen?
Yes, please. At this point, yes.
Okay, so let me open that to make sure it's clarified correctly. Alex, can you, you work with Co-Vice Chair Garcia and Commissioners Inman and Pons to make sure that happens? While we're talking, Commissioner Serbin?
Now, I'd just like to echo Commissioner Chen's earlier point, I think it was from yesterday, that, you know, if we're doing these changes just for, to just to improve percentages and deviation, I'm, I'm not sure that that's, that that's what we, that overrides what we have heard as the overwhelming weight of public input as to what we ought to do between Coronado and Imperial Beach.
I think what he's referring to is that as long as we're below 10%, we're okay.
Okay, thank you. Alex, about ready?
Yes, sorry, can you please clarify what, we're just viewing something, or is there some other population?
No, this, this is basically, and I'll turn to her in a second to confirm, Co-Vice Chair Garcia's suggestion to put Coronado from District, from District Three into District One and view the impacts, if any, that has on the summary statistics. Rosette, did I capture that effectively? Do you want to add something to that?
No, that's correct. And if I may, we had, we had a pretty robust conversation on, two meetings ago, about, about this move. And we had, at the, at the time, a majority of commissioners, we had eight, not nine, who saw the rationale for doing that. And I just want to remind everybody that our, our duty is to keep a coy together, which we will be doing in all cases with D1. We do not have an obligation to exclude communities from a, from a coy, or from a, from a district, from a supervisory district. And I think everybody is aware of that. So the final point I'll make is that we, our top priority is to create districts of equal population. And if we can do that, we can improve on a map and keep the population, keep that deviation as low as we possibly can, and respect coys. I don't see the argument for not doing it.
Okay, thank you for that. Alex?
Yes, let me share my screen. So just so I'm perfectly clear right now, for clarifying statement for myself, is we're looking right now at 3B, and the proposed change is to move Coronado to District One.
Correct. And before you continue, I'll just ask Dr. Gross, if there's a way you can offer any kind of quick analysis after, after Alex's presentation, I think there would be interest from the commission. Alex, please continue, sorry you're up.
No problem. So that's, just to remind people real quickly, 3B summary statistics, 7.5%. I just ran the numbers on that move. That would lower the deviation to 6.8%. If it helps, Dr. Gross, I can scroll down to, to the CVAP table to show for District One in particular, that Hispanic Latino is 50.7%.
And sorry, Alex, that's the, it's labeled 3D, but I assume it's three, we're talking Scenario 3B here, correct?
With, with the move for Coronado, yes. Right, I'm, I'm having.
Oh, I see, and you're using.
Yep.
Nope, that's great. Um, can you mention what the CVAP is for Latinos in the original Scenario 3B?
Yep, that is 52.5.
And this is, and under this, it would drop to?
50.7.
From, I just want to make sure I've got the numbers, from 52.5 to 50.7, correct?
That is correct.
Very good. All right, um, can we go back to the map? And I just want to make sure while it's displayed, because it, it's much easier for me to keep the process flowing if the map's not on the screen. But I think this is a relatively clear change. Are there any questions about what Alex is showing with regard to Coronado, as he very quickly moves through and efficiently? Thank you.
Just want to show that, so that I believe we can actually see the change. So yes, it'd be their blue Coronado.
Very good. I see two hands up, but I, I first just want to make sure, and I'll ask commissioners to just speak up. Are there any, what would normally be clarifying technical questions about the mapping that was just shown, or that is shown? Hearing none. Alex, or staff, I'll ask you to take down the screen.
Actually, actually. I, I did have a technical question on that change, because there was a strip of land where the ferry landing was in downtown. Would, I think we would want to move that with this kind of a move. Would, I think we would want to move that with this kind of a move.
That is eleven, eleven thousand people. So it's not an insignificant population change if we were
Could we, could we see the map just to see what it looks like?
Yes, certainly.
Okay, so I, I don't know if that's material or not, but that would stay, the Coronado would go. Anyway, thank you. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, so I have
I had, I had one question related to the map for Dr. Gross as well, related to the, um, ability to elect.
Okay, I, I just want to see, Dr. Gross, do you, can you answer some questions about that? Commissioner Kruglak, it's regarded with this change, with regard to this change, correct?
The Coronado change, correct? Yes, very specifically about that.
Okay, um, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just, I just
I'm sorry, let's, let's take Commissioner Kruglak's question.
Sorry.
And then Doctor, no, 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 it's great. Doctor Gross, please, you can take her question, but also offer whatever else you need to offer on this. It's very useful. Thank you.
Um, so I was particularly interested in, from your last analysis, Table three, the twenty sixteen U S Senate election, where it was Kamala Harris versus Loretta Sanchez, and Loretta Sanchez was the candidate of choice for the Latino community. The overall spend in that election was almost ten times higher for Harris versus Sanchez. And Sanchez barely won in District one with fifty percent of the vote, when on average, when you give us the averages of those numbers, it's much closer to sixty or seventy percent. So I want to understand how we think about money when we think about ability to elect in the context of districts and in the context of even if we maintain a koi, if there is a very, very different amount of money for different koi's. And we've seen in the twenty sixteen election, when that discrepancy is large, how that leads to differences in the ability to elect rate of win, win rate, whether that should be a consideration in this decision.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Sorry, I, I, um, didn't mean to interrupt the question. I, I thought it was going to be a slightly different question. So, um, so in terms of the ability to elect analysis, I have two responses. One is sort of broader. So we, we as V R A R P V consultants don't consider factors beyond the voter preferences of, um, different racial and ethnic groups. And so in San Diego County, Loretta Sanchez was the candidate of choice of Latino voters. Um, in the two thousand sixteen Senate election, Sanchez won that district, as you pointed out, by, um, lower vote share than other Latino candidates of choice in other exogenous elections, but did win District one in all of the different proposed maps that have, that you all have been discussing prior to this one. Um, and so the, um, but the, in terms of other factors to consider for the when and the why is sort of outside the scope of what we do for, um, R P V. I mean, one of the reasons that I'm a big proponent of analyzing as many of the racially polarized elections as possible over the last decade between Latino candidates and non-Latino candidates, um, is that it gives you a broad scope, right? So there's not one election that is driving things. And so if you think about the difference between an eighty percent win rate or a one hundred percent win rate, those are both relatively high opportunities to elect Latino candidates of choice. And so I would, I would, um, contextualize any one election in the idea that, um, in the idea that, um, you know, looking at all of the elections is really, really informative. And so that particular election is informative, but so are all of the other ones kind of together.
Thank you for that. Speaker's list I have is Commissioners Diaz, Serbin and Pons. Commissioner Diaz.
Yes, um, I just wanted to, I mean, looking at the change that was just made up, that looks like a pretty significant change um, by a few percentage points. Um, but still, even I think the R P V analysis still shows that it's a majority, a minority, minority, majority, uh, district with a hundred percent uh, likelihood that Latino voters would be able to vote for their candidate choice. My other question, I guess, I feel a little bit better, I don't know, but I, I guess my, my other question is just a very minor change. Um, we've received public comment, uh, about, um, and this isn't related to Coronado, so I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but La Presa and the Spring Valley Community Planning Area includes La Presa. So I know we've talked about this and two meetings ago, but I just, for the benefit of the public, why, um, we still included La Presa and we split that community of interest. I would, I would like to kind of review that.
Commissioner Diaz, it, it is strictly for a process point that I'd like you to hold that question. Um, I don't think it'll be directly affected by the Coronado question, and I'm going to just declare now that we're taking up the unfriendly amendment from Co-Vice Chair Garcia and focusing on that Coronado question. So we can have a vote about that. Now, if, if a commissioner wants to vote no on the amendment just on the basis that it's insufficiently connected to the rest of the discussion, that's certainly a debate, a topic for discussion, and I don't want to prejudice it one way or the other. But I would like us to focus on this one step at a time, if possible. But again, I don't mean to break up the coherence.
Wait, seven, if that technically, for Dr. Gross, is that technically, I mean, does that change at all, the, the ability to elect?
Yeah, that, that's why I raised my hand, Commissioner Diaz, thank you. So I have not yet had a chance to analyze those data. So I wanted to clarify if my previous comments are not, are about previous maps that I had had a chance to analyze. And so, you know, Alex and John, I think are going to send me over those data as soon as possible. And we can know, but right now I have to just be careful to know how much of a change in my mind.
Absolutely. And you think you'll be able to bring that data to us during this discussion, assuming Alex and John can
I hope so.
And I, I do have a slightly longer speakers list now, so that'll help. Good, thank you. Uh, Commissioners Serbin, Pons, Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Commissioner Serbin, please.
Thank you, Chair B. I'm sorry, I had to unmute. Um, so I want to make the, I, I just want to point out that we're not necessarily keeping Coronado away from Imperial Beach. I mean, that, that's one thing that we're doing and responding to some public comment in which that, that was requested of us. I think we're also responding by keeping Coronado in what we're calling this coastal district. We're responding also to other, to Coronado, as well as other coastal communities who are saying that there is a coastal community that needs to be preserved. So that's, that's the public comment that I want to stay faithful to. And, you know, I understand that our primary or our first priority is to create equal number population districts, but I also understand that we can do so given a variance that's acceptable. And in weighing those two considerations, I think we ought to give some deference to what all communities are saying to us, especially when we, in responding to that comment, we can still stay within the, the tolerance that's been given to us under law.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Pons?
Yes, um, with regard to the proposal to move Coronado into District one, you know, I was a proponent of that. But after reading the additional communities of interest comments, a lot of, um, comments that they didn't want to be moved to District one. The second point is, in consideration for District three, when we look at the R P V analysis, the words were used nuanced. Uh, we, they use that word nuanced. And I think we moved that population of over twenty thousand to District one is no longer nuanced. And I don't want to change, I don't want to change the way that R P V analysis looks or feels. So when it comes up to vote, I'll vote against it because I think it violates the preponderance of comments from those in Coronado to not move and be associated with District one. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, then Commissioner Brown, then perhaps Commissioner Serbin. Go ahead. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, sorry.
Uh, I withdraw my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Sorry, my purse was sticking on my screen. Uh, I believe we also, um, took Coronado into District one, uh, to keep it as a military interest koi with many other, uh, military koi's that are in National City and San Diego by the shipyards and Imperial Beach and Tula Vista has a heavy, um, retirement community of military too. So there is a, a koi established there including Coronado, where I don't, I, I'm, I can imagine that, um, Point Loma is probably has, well, we're a military town. So we have a lot of military everywhere, but they seem to be concentrated down in that area. And then it helps by taking any question of continuity out of our, um, uh, out of our range, because we no longer have to connect via ferry. So that, even though that was probably a, a pretty solid deal, we don't even have to go there with it. So that's my, my recommendation that I think it's fine to put in District one.
Okay. I'm going to take with some, uh, folks who haven't had the floor yet on this item. Sorry. And then a reminder that we are only on one amendment on a scenario, and we're going to have to pause in about five to ten minutes for a purely procedural question regarding the two o'clock deadline. But I'm going to turn now to Commissioners Dustle, then Larson, then Co-Vice Chair Garcia, then Commissioner Serbin. Commissioner Dustle, please.
Thank you. Yeah, as a proponent initially of the Coronado move, um, there were competing interests like everything. And so for me, on balance, because of the population issue, that's why I thought it made sense to move it back into District one. As long as we stay under ten percent, which we are in that scenario three B, um, uh, I'm all right with keeping it. Um, I wouldn't want to move it back. I think map three B scenario, District one is fine the way it is now. And the population isn't, um, an issue anymore as far as being under ten percent. So, um, I would, I would, I guess, vote against the amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner Larson.
I assume you called me. Uh, let me just say, I, I, I feel strongly that Coronado is one of the, uh, communities of interest that covering the whole coastal area. Uh, it's a lot of overlapping koi's. Uh, I'm very conscious of the military, um, distribution. Active retired military are spread out throughout our county, especially in our coastal areas. Uh, see, I don't think that's a valid reason to, uh, consider that koi more important than other koi's, uh, for the coastal area, which all, which have a common problem of the sewage from Mexico and the sea level rising and, uh, many other things that don't, uh, impact anywhere else in the county. But, uh, we want to keep our coastal communities, uh, together. So I'd have to vote against, uh, this, uh, unfriendly amendment.
Thank you. Um, I have Co-Vice Chair Garcia and then no other requests, so I'm going to close the floor. But before I turn to Co-Vice Chair Garcia, I don't want to deny Dr. Gross the opportunity to present any data he may has, he may have had time to get, or John.
Well, we're, we're compiling the data and sending it to him. It does take us five minutes to compile the data in a sense. So it's coming, but we need a little bit more time.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dr. Gross, anything else to add without that data available? Okay, Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
So maybe this will, um, move us along more quickly. I did not, I know you've been calling it an unfriendly amendment. I did not intend it as an unfriendly amendment. Um, I appreciate why we're doing this, this way. Um, but I had, um, recalled from that earlier conversation, um, Commissioner Pons and Commissioner Inman had both supported moving Coronado into, um, District one. So if, and that's why I, I moved this forward. I, um, have heard differently now from Commissioner Pons. And I'm, I'm perfectly, I mean, I would rather maybe just do a straw poll. And if we don't have nine commissioners ready to vote in favor of this, I will withdraw this motion and we don't have to spend the time doing the, the, you know, the roll call of the vote. Uh, I, I wasn't trying to gum up the works here.
Yeah, and it's not. I think it's been a very useful conversation to have. Um, I would note that my memory of the record is Commissioner Pons later that day did mention, uh, a change in position on uh, Coronado, but I think he covered it in his remarks just now, so we'll leave it at that. If, if that's amenable to the commission without objection, and it's a little tricky without having visibility in all commissioners, but let me just ask, can I see a show of hands for commissioners who would support the amendment that's been proposed? I see four, uh, Commissioners Serbin, Krugliak. Uh, and I think those are the only ones I can't see. Please speak up.
Wait, no, my hand should be down. Is my hand up?
Okay, no, no, it's not, it's not, it's not. I just wanted to check.
I count five on the screen, though.
I think five, yeah. I see five now, sorry. Okay, uh, Commissioner Garcia, how would you like to proceed?
Well, so if it's just five, it doesn't look like it will carry. So we, I will withdraw.
Thank you very much.
Spend any more time on this. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate the discussion. I, I think it was worthwhile. Okay. Um, let me pause there and, and just provide some technical information on where we are. Staff, because of technical limitations, cannot open the special meeting Zoom screen even to put up a notice that we're still meeting in this meeting. Uh, the procedural way to do this would have been to close this discussion for a moment, open the special meeting and recess the special meeting. That's no longer possible, given the technical limitations, and it's not anyone's fault. This is just the way Zoom works. So I wanted to see first with staff and council, uh, any recommendation they have, because I very much want to let the public know. We haven't taken this up. And Marguerite, in particular, see, I think we're fairly close to a vote, um, but not quite there yet on scenario three B. I'm, I'm wondering if we could shift to the special meeting, uh, Zoom call, open it up there and then recess it while staying in that call in order to continue this discussion. Marguerite, for yours?
Yeah, I'm here, yes. And I would ask staff if they could update the, uh, the email notice so that basically what we're going to do is continue this meeting under the special meeting passcode, right? So we're going to log into that, finish up here and then open the special meeting. The important thing is to somehow give the public notice that we're moving over to a new passcode. The other alternative, you see, we can't even notice the public that we're not in the special meeting if we stay here. So it would seem we told the public we'd be opening the special at two, at least we'd be under the right uh, Zoom. But Barbara, is it possible to update the Zoom link for this meeting so that it logs into where we, where we're going to be?
Yes, if I understand your question correctly, yes, we can go ahead and put a slide up as we're transitioning. Um, and we can go ahead and, um, maybe make the website a little bit more prevalent on the two P M. But I, I think I understood your question, Marguerite, and yes, we can do that.
Okay, we have a hundred and thirty one people with us. And that's why I want to make sure that everybody gets over there. And anybody else who joins because of the significance of item, the items on the special meeting knows where we are. Okay.
And I want to make sure we allow sufficient time for that to happen, even if it takes a few minutes. I assume Commissioners wouldn't mind having a moment as well to get up and collect more papers and such. Commissioner Hanson, please.
Just so you know, I don't have access to the special meeting. So if I could, somebody could send me the phone number, I could get in that way unless I will be transferred from here.
I'll ask you and staff to work on that. Staff, thank you again for going the extra mile on that, because I know it's someone's fault. Commissioner Serbin?
And we completely post the link and the phone number of the the special meeting on in the chat, maybe?
In the chat of this?
Of this meeting?
Yeah.
That does that make sense to do?
I'm I I take the point, um, rather than that, Barbara, could we display, because I don't know that we need to vote, could we just display on this screen the information?
Yes, and it's going to take a couple of moments to to ensure we can do the transition. It's also on the main page of our website.
Right, but I I as you, Marguerite, and I'm sure Commissioners agree, with more than a hundred participants in this, I'd like to take the moment to show them. Um, Commissioners, I do assume this is a good time to take to make this transition in our discussion as well. When we come back, I will rem, well, I won't remind you, I'll tell you now. Um, we do have the timeline that Flo gave us. I think we're fairly quick, we're moving fairly well along. I do want to ask the Commission, as soon as we're back on that other screen, do are we close to moving to a vote on scenario three B in the full motion that is proposed with Commissioner Inman, seconded by Commissioner Pons? Or are we going to need some sort of discussion regarding Rancho San Diego as an amendment? I'm not asking for it now. I just ask you to consider it so that if we're going down that road, we can go down there expeditiously. I'll also remind Commissioners that we have another time sensitive matter with regard to Commissioner availability. Okay. So for right now, we'll just wait for staff. Marguerite, I'm assuming we don't need to vote for this kind of transition.
No, 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 no. No.
Commissioner Hanson?
I found it on the webpage. Thank
Thank you for the, thank you for going the extra mile. It's always appreciated.
Chairman, this is Barbara. So to confirm you, we're working on the slide to go ahead and post. Was there anything else that you needed before we transition over?
I don't need anything. I think it's all been stated, Commissioners, any. Okay, we're going to do transition then. It is one fifty six. For the sake of convenience and not misleading on time, I'm going to say, please be back on no later than two ten. Okay, so that gives you a good thirteen fourteen minutes. Okay, very well. So we are in shifting to a different technical venue as of one fifty seven and regathering at two ten. Thank you very much.